Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
If you'd please stand with me, I'm going to ask Clerk Stright to start us off in prayer.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you we can come together this morning to consider the business that is before the County Commission this morning, and we just pray that your Spirit be amongst us, and that you would guide and direct all we say and do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as from.
I'll call the meeting of the Hampshire County Commission to order Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. And good morning, everybody, again, and welcome to the Hampshire County Commission meeting. We will start the meeting off with the minutes of our previous meeting. Both Commissioners normally get a digital copy of those to review beforehand, so we could take this time to discuss any changes needed or approve them as presented.
Unfortunately, I was not able to review the minutes this week, so I'm abstaining from the vote, just as a heads up there.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
And I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve last meeting's minutes as submitted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, and Commissioner Mance abstained due to the fact he wasn't able to review these minutes. We did have three pages this time.
They were long, sorry.
A lot of that was the election of members to the boards, though. Okay, so we'll move on to the Presidents and Commissioners' reports. Gentlemen, I do not have anything this meeting. I was gone for yearly family vacation there, so other than a few small things, emails and phone calls, I don't have a full report this time, so I'll pass the floor along to Commissioner Mance.
Thank you, President Edgar. I think the primary thing that I wanted to talk about, I've spent the last week primarily doing research in regards to our transmission line projects that are pending in the county. We received an email, day 26, to us three as Commissioners. Essentially, it was an email from, I believe she is the, I think she's the President, from high-ranking executive at Nextera Energy advocating for all the benefits, to include the tax benefits that'll come to the county if these regional transmission projects go through. One thing that I thought of in reading that, and we'll have ample time to discuss, is the opportunity that this might present itself for us to evaluate how we might use tax offset incentives or programs to essentially leverage the type of project that we want. And Nextera wants to build large overhead transmission lines through our county. We do not want that. We've advocated an alternative, which is burying the lines along our major routes, namely US Route 50, which would increase the cost by almost two times. If there's an opportunity for us to use the potential tax revenue that we would get as a county to offset that, and use that as an incentive to Nextera to build the project the way that we want them to, I think that's something that we could and should explore as a county. So I've spent a good bit of time exploring that, and I hope to, by our next meeting, gentlemen, want to provide you guys with what my research turns up, and to, you know, a proposed response that we might be able to make to Nextera in them reaching out and, you know, waving all the dollar signs that are going to be coming to the county in order to get us to Caltail and say, hey, don't worry about it, build it, and we'll just take the money. That's primarily what I've been working on. I did do a fair amount of research into the investment tools that we can use for the sale of the senior center, and I'll have more information. I actually do have the RFP already done for that, but I'll have more information for both you gentlemen for our next meeting on that as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mance, for that research and report. Commissioner Brill?
Thanks, President Edgar. I was also out of town for a week, so I did not have a whole lot of stuff going on. I will report back, though, that I believe that our last meeting, the meeting prior to, I was tasked with working on trying to find an appraiser to help us come up with a value for the health center, and I have been working on that. I have reached out and spoken to a few, still waiting on them to get back in touch with me with details, and certainly will present that to you, gentlemen, as soon as I have that information in hand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. We're running a little bit ahead of schedule. Clerk, do you have any housekeeping items for us to look at?
We have one exoneration.
Make a motion that we approve the exoneration submitted to us by the Assessors' Office, or Tax Office.
Second.
Assessors.
I was right the first time.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the exoneration to be approved, presented by the Assessor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And I have some requested HCSA exemptions.
Motion passed. Clerk's ahead of himself here.
Make a motion that we approve the exemptions as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ambulance ticket exemptions submitted to the Commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed.
We have a personnel letter from the Treasurer regarding the retirement of Jacqueline Wolford.
Jackie was a longtime employee. She's one of those who, actually, the sick days count toward her retirement. For the most of us that came on since 2010, that didn't happen.
Any motion on that?
Yeah.
Prove the retirement or the days? You can do both. Be detailed about it if you want.
I'll make a motion that we accept the memorandum from Jacqueline Wolford and her retirement from the Hampshire County Sheriff's Office. And I was just going to say, in addition, agree to owing the vacation days and the unused sick days remaining on her retirement.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Second.
That we approve the memorandum from the Sheriff's Office in regards to Ms. Wolford's retirement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed, and we thank Jacqueline for the many years of service to the county there.
And, gentlemen, in our last meeting, you approved the Sheriff's request, Sheriff and Treasurer signs requested regarding an expiring certificate of deposit. The paperwork that was signed at that time was to terminate that one. I have the paperwork for the new CD, but you approved all that in the last action, so it was covered. The new CD would be for seven months, nine months, and nine months at a rate of 4.15, 4.15. So I have those for signature, but I don't think we need further action.
Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the Romney Pool Project funding request, and we have the Mayor and Mrs. Anderson. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us back. Let's see, I have copies of this for you. One for Logan. The Romney Pool Project would like to thank you for having us again today. Let's see, I better sit down and get close to the mic. We'd like to reiterate that we are a 501(c)(3), and all donations to the pool are tax-deductible. We are so proud of our volunteers who have helped fundraisers advertise, promote, and visited service organizations and businesses for us. Hundreds of volunteers have helped. They have worked tirelessly to raise awareness for the need for the swimming pool for Hampshire County, and of course, thanks to Mayor Caddell, along with many of the councilmen and towns of Romney's staff for their support. The town has written many grants and been successful in several endeavors. The community has been very supportive and donated, volunteered, and sponsored events, and we are now close to $700,000 pledged for our pool, as we explained in June. Our goal is 1.1 million, and we are at the jump-off point and need to move now in order to have a pool next year for the community. And we're here to ask if you have considered how you might help us fill this gap in our funding? Have you considered using the opioid money you will receive to help fund the pool, or any other creative way? There may be funding, including interest-free loan. Coach Bob Turner, who was the swim team coach here for the Romney Dolphins for over 15 years, has passed away, and his family are honoring his memory by asking for donations to the pool project in lieu of flowers. The Turner family is also promoting the ACH debit program, Sink the Pool Fund. We are hopeful that the Sink the Pool Fund will continue to grow and will help in loan repayment. Anyone can sign up for the Pool Fund ACH monthly debits, just like paying your phone bill automatically out of your bank account, and pledge the monthly amount of your choice for the Romney Community Pool. This is an awesome way to donate, because we can project income and could possibly make a loan for the money we are projected to receive. With this debit program, we are equating one unit as $5. If we can have 1,000 pledges per month of $25 per month, we can build the pool. That's $300,000 a year. The goal of the project is 300,000 per year, and we need your help to get the project over the goal line. We are hoping to meet this goal quickly, so we can have a pool in Romney in 2025. We ask that you consider that we follow the Icelandic method of supporting the community and fixing their drug problem. The Icelandic people turned around their drug problem in Iceland by concentrating on swimming, sports, music, and educational programs for their youth. You can look it up online. It was, it really, they did a great job and have completely turned their country around. We are working on programs for the pool complex, which include swim lessons, swim team, competitions, educational and vocational opportunities for our youth, as well as encouraging a healthy lifestyle of exercise. We are also including adult programs. It is so important for children today to have a safe place to swim, play, exercise, and get exhausted in the summer. We are asking all the people who want to see our children thrive here to consider a monthly pledge to get this pool built. Thank you for your time and consideration. And there are, will be copies of the ACH debit program left on the back table, if it's okay with the Commissioners, in case anyone would like to pick one up and pledge. It's run through the FNB Bank, and you can just take a canceled check-in or voided check-in to ACH. Judy Lee is heading up the program for us there. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. We do, we have planned Kids' Day this Saturday, and it is free for everyone for all the activities. We're going to have pony rides, and I have posters here. Thanks to Lou Ann Smith for making the posters for us for free. This will be run by the Romney Pool Project, and it is totally sponsored by the volunteers. No money has come out of the fund to fund this, but it will be free for everyone, except for food in the dunk tank. We're going to have pony rides, lots of yard games, cakewalk, bouncy house. We're having a DJ. David Bridges is coming and donated that. We're asking everyone to come at 5:00 on Saturday to the Schools for the Deaf and Blind Soccer Field and enjoy this, and it looks like we're going to have fireworks at the end. Thank you. I have posters for you.
Okay, thank you, ladies, for your presentation. Mayor, did you have anything else?
I think Patty said it all. The only thing I would add is that, along with being a recreational facility, it will, the pool will provide education, as she mentioned, for young adults and young children, and hopefully seniors as well. And I think it could be looked at in a different light, and that is as an economic development tool, because it will certainly be a star in Hampshire County's hat to have a pool facility the way this one is being planned. So we hope that it will, this is phase one, to put the pool in, and then we hope to add more amenities as we go along, as money becomes available. Now, have you all thought of a creative way to finance the remaining $300,000?
Well, I'm going to open that up for discussion for the Commissioners. Obviously, we can't, as a group, go into considerable discussion outside of a meeting, but I've certainly thought it over since the last time we met. I'll just start the discussion as, you know, I would like to see the Commission be able to help in some way. Exactly how we go about that, I think there's, you know, probably a couple of different ways, but that's what I'll open the floor for discussion at this time, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, if you don't mind, I'll step in here, because I'm going to have to step out very quickly. Not out of the meeting, I'm just going to have to recuse myself from the vote. So I couldn't tell you guys with enough words how much I love and believe in this project. I am candidly still an attorney for the town, and will have to recuse myself from any Commission vote for that matter, but I plan on continuing to be involved in this project, because I believe in what it's going to do for our community. From the Commission's standpoint, I see this, along with other projects that could be proposed by outside entities to bring youth programming into our county, as a tremendous opportunity for us. The children that are going to be impacted by this project are across our entire county. There is not, you know, my kids will go to this from Cape and Bridge, their friends will go to this from Cape and Bridge, because it will be our community pool project. And even if I wasn't involved with the project as, you know, an attorney for the town, I would see this as somebody or another entity and part of the community, because it's not just the town, it's all volunteers that have stepped up to do this, coming to us with a 70% solution. They're saying, hey, it's a massive project. We've already done a massive amount of legwork, and we've already raised the vast majority of the funds, help us across the line. And I think that there is an opportunity for us as a Commission to see and recognize those opportunities when they're presented to us, and to enter into collaboration for the greater good of the county. I'm not going to lie and say, hey, I don't also very much support this, but I think that it makes sense from a monetary standpoint, too. If we can make a contribution here that can help get this project across the line, it would effectively be us enabling something that we otherwise wouldn't be able to afford to do on our own as a Commission, or would cost considerably more. So I think that that's a decent approach and standpoint for us to evaluate it, or, gentlemen, really, for you to evaluate it from the Commission's standpoint. From the financial standpoint, I understand pretty much two avenues, and one is almost impossible. This project, I understand, has the support of our local lending facilities, and the banks are looking to, you know, help find out whatever the gap is and finance the project, and then that'll have an amortized cost across the, you know, into the future, which I think these recurring donations will be a large contribution towards, to include future add-ons and additions to the project. If we could sit here as a Commission and say, yep, we'll cover you for this month or year, but we have limitations on burdens that we can create for future commissions, i.e., we can't make an allocation for $20,000 a year for the next 10 years. So I think that it almost is more appropriate for us, if, you know, we would consider a monetary donation, to either make a lump-sum donation that would help the town and the volunteers reduce the amount that they have to borrow, or us to lean on one of our other county entities that can amortize that cost over the future. And I think that that would actually take a little bit longer and probably wouldn't be able to be done in time to get this pool project started. So unless I'm missing something, I think a lump-sum donation is about the best option that we have. And as far as amounts, I actually don't think I'm, you know, able to comment on, you know, what I would vote for for an amount, but I can say that earlier this year, the Commission was prepared to cut a check for $500,000 to help out our emergency service agency. We held back on that, and through, you know, the really strong work of that team, we've been able to save forecasted over $200,000 off of that amount that we thought we were going to have to donate this year. So we were comfortable earlier this year spending an additional $200,000 over what we projected in order to make sure that our HCSA was in good financial shape. I think that that is a thing that we can consider in this, is that an amount that we were already prepared to, you know, make an expense for that we needed, maybe there's opportunity to explore whether or not we're also comfortable, you know, making a comparable or a somewhat similar donation for something that our kids need. I mean, this is a rare opportunity, and I think this is, I think this is one of those chances for us to do something that's going to last and have a major impact on our county as a whole. I've talked for enough, so I'll kick it over to you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Brill, do you have any comments, questions?
Well, thank you, ladies, for being here, and certainly brought a crowd with you, and, you know, I personally, in all the years living in Hampshire County, never made it to the Romney Pool. Obviously, I live on the other end of the county, similar to Commissioner Mance, so it's quite a haul up here most of the time. But as you know, I mean, I have been very involved in the community all across the county, and so I am absolutely an advocate for things that can be beneficial to the county as a whole. Swimming pools are great, they're nice to have, they are also quite costly, not only in construction, but also in upkeep. I think, obviously, the pool, the first pool project here in town is a testament to that. Obviously, as they age, things deteriorate, there are a lot to keep up with. There's a similar project ongoing in Hardy County with the old pool there that was just no longer feasible to keep up, and so they're in the process of revamping that and turning it to, I believe, a splash pad. So certainly, there are things we can do to these kind of projects that can benefit the county. We do, as a county, rely a lot on our citizens. There are a lot of projects and a lot of things that happen in this county that do not happen with the support of the local businesses and the support of the people. And we fortunately live in a very giving community, and the people are willing to stand, step up, help when there's something like this, opportunity like this for us to do something special. I do, you know, again, think that the fact that you guys have worked as hard as you have, raised as much money as you have, certainly speaks for itself. That's very applaudable. It's not easy to do, and it also speaks to, I think, the community's interest in this project. If you could, and I apologize, I just don't know the details of this, I just wanna make sure I understand it right, that to get the project started is, it's 1.1 million, correct? Is that gonna complete the first phase of the project?
Yes. That will build the pool, the poolhouse, the bathrooms, concession stand, put the fence around it. You know, it will be totally usable. Phase two, we hope, will be a splash pad. We're also looking at putting pavilions in so the community can have picnics there or whatever, birthday parties or whatever. And we have a lot of educational programs and other things that we're planning to do there.
Appreciate that clarity.
One thing I might add to the 1.1 million, all is subject, of course, to bids and what the bids come in. You are well aware of that aspect of it, so I just wanna throw in that we, our best guess is 1.1 million, relying on the engineering costs, or the cost that the engineering team has provided to us, but it all comes down to how the bids come in.
Also, we have the debit program that we're anticipating, and a Friends of the Pool Group to help maintain the pool, provide jobs, help pay for it. The town has taken on that burden of paying for all the utilities and the lifeguards and the people who worked there in the past. We hope to be able to help them with the debit program continuing as we go forward with the pool and have it open and still continue the debits.
Okay, gentlemen, I just, I wanna, I guess, review and just to reiterate a few things. It would be difficult for the county commission to, you know, to put it in simple terms, sign up with the bank. That's something that the commission's not, by code, is not really able to do. We could consider something similar like to that on a yearly basis. Again, but it would have to be proposed to all the commissioners yearly. So, that avenue's a little more difficult. As Commissioner Mance stated, there are other entities within the county government that we could work with to set up something like that. But again, that's a little more difficult for us to do. Financially, probably a little easier, but the act of actually doing it was, is a little harder. Lump sum amount, again, that would be a big help to you guys here in the beginning. I think before I could set an exact amount, I would ask our clerk's office to look at our budget. You know, obviously, this was not in our budget. However, we did budget for a considerable amount of help to the county ambulance, which we have not had to use as much of that. We do have a project for the sheriff down in part of the old board office that is, that is good. It costs some money. So, my proposal, gentlemen, would be for a lump sum to start off, and then as the years go by, if we wanted to, again, be approached on a yearly basis, we could add some funding there, or set up something longer term through another entity. But as far as the lump sum, I would propose that we get the clerk and his deputies to review that closely for us and see what kind of an amount would be reasonable. So, again, I support the project, gentlemen, and, you know, again, I think it's a good thing overall for the county. I can't faithfully put a number on the amount today. I think we could come up with that very soon, but again, that would be my suggestion, gentlemen. So, I'll open the floor back up for more comments.
Well, I would agree. I mean, again, that's a project I think can be very beneficial to the community. We, as commissioners, are responsible for ensuring that we allocate the taxpayers' funds appropriately, and I would agree with having the clerk's office review the budget to ensure that there would be funds there. I think we are responsible for ensuring that it is allocated, the money is allocated appropriately. Once we have that information, certainly, we could look back at reviewing. I agree with Commissioner Eglinger. I think a lump sum, if available, would be the best route. And so, I would agree with your assessment.
Thank you.
Final comments. I want to say thank you for the presenters and everybody in the room, and everybody that you've worked with that's put in the amount of time that I know you have on this project. Our kids will be grateful, even if they won't know who did it. That's not why we do it. So, thank you all for your time and your dedication to the community.
Thank you. I don't mean to, to put forth a question, but time is of the essence if we want a pool next year. Do you suppose you will have an answer by, I know you don't have another meeting this month, would you have an answer before the next meeting, which would be the first, I don't know the date, in August, or?
The commission does have to have a special meeting in regard to the final budget adjustment, essentially. That needs to be done. We're, Bethany and Holly have reviewed things, and they felt like we could be ready on the 15th, which is next Tuesday. And I'd say maybe we could post that as an agenda item at that point and accomplish both things at once, if you like. I'm certain we can have a recommendation for you at that time, too.
Okay, that sounds good, clerk. With that, I'll make a motion that we, the commission asked the clerk's office to review the budget and help work with the commissioners to come up with a sum for donation to the community pool project.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded in relation to a donation to the Romney Community Pool Project. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, and I'll note that Commissioner Mance has abstained due to his work on the legal aspects of the pool project.
Thank you all very, very much.
We really appreciate you, your consideration here. And if you wanna see the community at work and the pool project at work, please come Saturday evening at 5:00 to the Schools for the Deaf and Blind Soccer Field. We're gonna have free pony rides. We have lots of free things for the children to do in the community and the youth, and that's what they need. They need as much as they can to keep them busy and out of trouble. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next agenda item, moving right along as we're running just a little bit behind, is the Cape and Bridge Complex presentation of bids on bathrooms and improvements. I think we got Mr. John Todd Hott's gonna come up here for that.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
Hopefully, as you guys are aware, we have been working diligently at the Cape and Bridge Community Complex to continue to upgrade that property. And one of the things that we have done, in addition to trying to upgrade the plumbing and the electrical in the building, we've written grants. We've granted the USDA to apply for monies to go towards windows, doors, painting, all types of other things. The county commission was nice enough to grant some ARPA money, I think that was left over, and split those monies between the Development Authority and Parks and Rec. We have spent $2,800 of that, at least our portion of it, on the security system for the building. And so, of the $37,500 that the Development Authority had left over, we have 34,700 left. We did put out a public bid for the plumbing. If you've been in the Cape and Bridge Complex recently, the bathrooms downstairs that the community uses when they come in to pay their taxes, renew their car tags, or for the community dinners, several of the bathrooms have signs on the doors that say unusable, and it's just an old antiquated restroom facility. In addition to that, we have a women's wellness center that has moved in upstairs, and for medical purposes, there was a desperate need for a bathroom upstairs. So, we put it out to bid. Our, when Matthew Hott and I started talking about this project, we were hoping that the numbers for this would come in between $30,000 to $35,000 just for the plumbing. We had five, we had five plumbing contractors show up for the pre-bid meeting. It was mandatory that they, that you be at the meeting to bid. We unfortunately, well, I say fortunately, Matthew felt it was very good, that we got three bids. We met yesterday morning, reviewed those bids, and they came in a little higher than we anticipated. Genesis came in at a, and I'm assuming it's okay to, is it okay to?
Yes, absolutely.
To, okay. The Genesis came in at $48,600. Integrity Plumbing came in at 51, and I'm just gonna round these off, at 51,300. And Cape and Bridge Glass came in at 61,700. So, those are the three bids that we received for, just for the plumbing. That's, again, remodeling the downstairs bathrooms and putting in a new bathroom upstairs for the Women's Wellness Center, basically, that we need. Based on the monies that we have left, we are $14,000 over budget. So, we're here today, I guess, to talk about the open bid process, what it costs, and to possibly award to one of those contractors. So, I guess I wanted to share those numbers with you, first of all. And then, second of all, I guess the discussion, I hate to even mention this, since you just had a presentation from the town of Romney asking for money, kind of the options here are, one, do we go back out and do we rebid it and ask people to sharpen their pencils, or two, is it possible that the county commission kick in the $14,000 that were over budget on the plumbing bids that we have in fact received already? So, that's kind of my, that's kind of my spiel to you, commissioners.
Mr. Hott, did, in reviewing those bids, does the Development Authority, and is, I guess I'll ask, is the Parks and Rec involved at all with this?
No, this is just our side of the building. Parks and Rec have other more pressing needs on their side of the building, specifically the roof, and I really should have Nick speak to this, but the roof, they've got other more pressing needs than plumbing right now. This is just our side of the building.
So, in those three bids, did you, is there a recommendation or concerns or questions about any of the three? I see there is about $13,000 difference from highest to lowest, but is there, for example, concerns about the lowest one or highest one, or anything like that?
No, Matthew, and I should have mentioned this, Matthew Hott could not be here today. He had a medical issue that he had to attend to. But no, when we reviewed the numbers yesterday, he felt very confident with the company, the lowest bidder in Genesis. He did not have an issue with their proposal or their price. I only wish it were, I only personally wish it were lower, because again, I'm trying to maximize the dollars that I've got to spend, but it is the, it is the lowest bid that I do have.
Would you recommend a rebidding process, or do you feel that that would not be worth the time?
I asked Matthew about that yesterday, actually, as we left the meeting, and he said no. He felt that these numbers are gonna be in the line where we are. He said we can go out and rebid it again, but, you know, having another pre-bid meeting with other folks, we're just gonna delay this process, and we actually have been trying to get this done since February. Now, one other thing that I didn't mention, and maybe I should have, I did mention the USDA grant. I have been following up with the USDA folks for quite a while. They have not awarded those monies yet, and I don't know personally if I would be allowed to use some of those monies to apply to this. We did bid, we did write that grant such that it was specific to doors, windows, and other types of things, and I don't know when you submit, and maybe Logan would know this better than I, in fact, I'm sure he would, if you're allowed to. It is a reimbursable type of a thing, so in other words, as you spend the money, then you submit the expenses, and then the government then approves it. I did not put any plumbing or electrical expenses in that grant when I wrote it, and I don't know if they would allow you to then change the types of contract work that you do, if they would reject that or not.
Probably not without a lot of paperwork.
Right. So, I don't know that I would have the flexibility with the government to do that.
If I may, if I may, sometimes that process is actually pretty straightforward, depending on the nature of the grant. So, the answer is as simple as, we just gotta find out who the grant administrator, not administrator, but the administrator at the granting offices, like who's our handler. If we touch base with them and then say, hey, this is our proposal for a modification, one application, half the time, it'll come back in an email, yeah, no problem, fill out this form, and then it's as simple as that. And then, once that's been approved, it's actually within the scope of work that's covered by the grant, so you could get it refunded later on. Now, I'm not saying that they will, but getting that answer is actually normally pretty straightforward.
And I did reach out to her yet. She's in Morgantown. I did reach out to her yesterday, but I just haven't heard back from her yet.
Is there, do they have a stated time for when they would award those monies?
We submitted the grant in February, and we weren't allowed to expend any dollars until after August 1st, but the last time I spoke with her, they had not, they weren't sure when they were gonna be awarding the grant. So, I don't, honestly, Brian, I don't know.
Obviously, gentlemen, I'd like to see the project happen. I think, you know, good solid restrooms and facilities is key to a building such as that down there. You know, and I think it's, you know, a big step forward to continue and improve in that complex down there. So, and I think, too, the monies from the grant, if we are to receive those, and hopefully we will, there'll be plenty of places to spend that on improvements as well. And even after that, the building will continue to still need improvements. So, you know, I would certainly suggest that we, my suggestion, gentlemen, would be that we kick in the funds for the lowest bid. Again, that's just one, just my suggestion. I'll open the floor for your gentleman's consideration as well.
President Eglinger, if I may?
Go ahead.
This is actually, this is actually one of the things that I kinda had in mind, and I was hopeful when we ran our discussion through a couple months back about opening up the number of uses that the Development Authority Infrastructure Fund could be used for. My goal in bringing that forward was such that the Development Authority, they have a pot of money in the bank, which right now is hard to use, and there's very few people that are applying to use it. If we have, you know, in a sense, untied their hands and said, hey, you can use these funds for whatever you want, this would just be a matter of specifically authorizing those funds to be used, and the Development Authority could decide as a board if it, how it wanted to use them. They could pick the high bid, the low bid. They're capable of evaluating the bids, so long as that's done in accordance with state code, which I know they can. We could essentially just by today, allow them to use those funds that they're otherwise having a hard time spending on their own project. And I think that that could set a good tone for them being able to drive their own projects going forward. It's an option that's available to us.
Yeah, I mean, I would just add that I agree that that building seems to be getting more and more use all the time. There's a lot of more folks in and out of there. These are things that we knew early on were gonna need to be replaced, repaired, fixed. It is an old building. And obviously, there's been a lot of time, effort, and money spent there already to get it to the position it's in today. And so, yeah, again, I'm in favor of, you know, doing something to get this over the top. If, you know, I guess if the board, your board, would be in favor of doing what Commissioner Mance suggested, and potentially using some of those funds, I would not be opposed to that. I guess I would defer to you, Mr. Hott, and see what your thoughts are on that.
I guess my question there would be, and again, I know Commissioner Mance, I owe you that, and I finished that document, I kinda need to send that to you, the infrastructure document that we spoke about a few weeks ago. But it's always been the understanding that those funds be reimbursed. So if we use money from that fund, then we would have to, then the Development Authority would then reimburse those funds from the rents we collect from the tenants at the building? Or are you saying just borrow from ourselves and not repay that money? Or whatever our board then decides? Is that what you're saying?
It's my understanding that we haven't been able to track down any restrictions that are still applicable on those funds.
Correct.
Those funds were granted by the County Commission a couple years back as a reimbursement to that account. And what my goal in bringing this forward a few weeks ago was that it's now a discretionary account for the Development Authority to do with as it sees fit. If you wanna use it as, you know, revolving funds that you lend out, do that. If you wanna build a project, do that. If you wanna run fiber to the Business Park in Romney, do that. Whatever your board sees fit, that's what I would like to see those funds, you know, be able to be spent on. And I think this project would fit into that category. If you have a deficit under an amount, you know, that the County Commission has allotted funds for, I think it would squarely fit into infrastructure as well, as you're creating the maker space and a, you know, business incubator space in town, and you're doing hardscape improvements, so.
Yeah, I would agree that there's more flexibility there than what was traditionally out there, I guess, for lack of a better word. But, you know, again, I think the commission, and Clerk may be able to help me, you know, we reimbursed that fund here fairly recently, a year or so ago. But again, that fund may not have been reimbursed had the commission not done so. Is that a fair statement? So to me, it's really just commission money, taxpayer money that we've allotted to the Development Authority to use for various projects.
That's correct.
So again, I think this would qualify.
Okay.
And whether the Development Authority wants to eventually put it back, just for the sake of having it there, would be kind of a, like a savings account thing for them. Or if they choose not to, I would say they wouldn't necessarily have to either.
Well, I would just say, speaking as the Director of the Development Authority, I would very much like to, if we use those monies, and of course, as my board would have to sign off on this, but as the Director, I would like to, if we borrow money from that fund, I would like to repay it through the rents that I collected at Cape and Bridge to keep those monies available for other county entities that as funds, or as needs arise, we have the monies for various other projects. So I think my recommendation to my board would be to borrow the $14,000 from our infrastructure fund, repay it to the infrastructure fund, so that that fund continues to build and grow, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a good idea and good business for the Development Authority. I think it also helps the general fund for the county, you know, as we are getting asked a lot here lately. And, you know, revenues are up a little bit, and that's helping. But at the same time, this route would make it easier on our end.
Sure.
It's money that's already, we've already accounted, you know, for, so.
All right. I guess then the only thing I need from you gentlemen then is just an okay to approve the award to Genesis for the contract? Is that correct?
I would say probably so. I mean, it's your money, you're the one.
Well, I mean, the 37, the 34 that's left over is ARPA money that's coming through your office. So I would need, I mean, the majority of the funds being spent are coming through the County Commission. The difference will be coming through the infrastructure fund, so would I not need?
Money's already been approved.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess then I'm just here to report that we're gonna, apparently, we're gonna award the contract to Genesis at the low bid for the bathroom remodel at Cape and Bridge. I guess if you're saying I don't need any action.
If you'd like the commission to act on it, I'm sure they'd be, take your recommendation.
Pending your board wants to spend the 14.
I'm sure they probably will, so.
Just for clarity's sake, for, you know, the community and myself, because again, I'm still relatively new to this, but the infrastructure fund was replenished, I know it was depleted during the demo of the hospital, correct?
No.
Or no?
No, it was, it was, the Development Authority was instructed by the County Commission to give to Cape and, to Town of Cape and Bridge when they were having water and sewer issues. And it was used to kinda right the ship down there.
Okay.
And then, a year and a half ago, it was reinstated by the County Commission. And we've had it held in a CD at FNB for a year and a half now. We've earned a little interest on it. And so, not that I'm trying to spend money, 'cause I'm, you know, don't wanna do that, but we certainly wanna, we wanna use it for good projects for the county. And this certainly would qualify.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, John Todd.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Jakey.
John Todd. I think I just acted as the recipient of the bids as they were submitted in a central point for the opening, so, you know, that was my involvement in it.
Okay.
Okay, our next agenda item, as we are a few minutes behind, Romney Rescue Squad, LNT Electrical Contractor Bid. Clerk, do you have any?
President Eglinger, if I may?
Okay, go ahead.
I spoke with Blake Shockey, the current president of Romney Rescue Squad. Both he and the chief work full-time, as most of our volunteers do, and it would've been a bit of a hindrance for them to try to get here during the middle of the workday. And he asked if, you know, they needed to be present. I indicated that, you know, I'd be happy to present if he was all right with that. Admittedly, he sent me a letter yesterday, which I forwarded to you guys just this morning, so I should've got that out to you earlier. I'm prepared to read the letter that they've submitted, and then also just speak. I spoke to Blake Sunday afternoon as well. So if you don't mind, President Eglinger, I'll read that letter.
Yes, go ahead and read that. I haven't had a chance to review it.
Okay. Dear Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to consider our request for any potential action you may take. I apologize for not being able to attend the meeting in person. Due to the full-time work schedules of both our chief and myself, we were unable to be present. However, given the urgency of our situation, we felt it was important to bring this matter to your attention promptly. We are currently experiencing HVAC issues at Romney Rescue Squad's main building. During the recent heat wave, we had a company inspect the system. They discovered a significant refrigerant leak caused by a crack in the evaporator coil. While they were able to temporarily refill the refrigerant, they strongly recommended a full unit replacement. To explore our options, we contacted a second company, LNT Electrical Contractors, for a second opinion and quote. After their evaluation, LNT advised against a full replacement, stating that our current system is still in good enough condition and expected to last several more years. They provided a quote for the necessary repairs and offered, quote, "a full replacement if we desired," though they did not recommend it at this time. The initial company, however, was adamant that the repair was not feasible and estimated a replacement cost of between $4,000 and $6,000. They declined to provide a written quote citing their recommendation for full replacement. Given the high verbal estimate of the first company's unwillingness and the first company's unwillingness to pursue repairs, we are presenting the repair quote from LNT Electrical Contractors for your consideration. We respectfully request that the commission consider covering the cost of these repairs. I've discussed the matter with Commissioner Mance by phone and wanted to follow up with this formal written request to the commission as a whole. Thank you for your time, consideration, and continued service to our community. Sincerely, Blake Shockey, President, Romney Volunteer Rescue Squad. So, yeah, and I talked with Blake Sunday night. The matter's as simple as HVAC went out, you heard the letter. They got the replacement part, which is supposed to keep their system in operation for several years, or they think it'll keep it in operation for several years, at $1,600. That, I believe, was sent out previously. I'm looking at it right now. I don't know if you gentlemen had the chance to, had the chance to see it, but I know that came our way this week. So, bottom line upfront, $1,600 to repair a system. I think, you know, repairing it is a good use of, you know, conservation of funds, if it's able to do it, and it'll buy another few years of operation. So that's the, that's the nature of the request, gentlemen. I'm happy to speak, even though I probably don't know too much more than that at this point.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mance. Gentlemen, traditionally, we have worked with the Romney Rescue Squad on various expenses such as this. So I wouldn't think it out of our realm to entertain helping them out with this. So, any other comments, questions, gentlemen?
If I could interject a second?
Yes. Just a minute, sir, just a minute.
If I could, that is accounting a building leased to Romney Rescue, as are several other of our squad buildings. And LNT has worked with us on a number of things and been very reputable and reliable in the HVAC electrical realm. Thanks, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Clerk. Commissioner?
I don't have any questions, President.
Sir, did you, you wanna ask something?
I was just curious, is this such a new facility?
This is not the new county building, sir. It's the one downtown here with it, the volunteers operate out of.
Next to the new elementary school.
I make a motion that we approve the $1,600 to assist the Romney Rescue Squad with the HVAC repairs necessary at their building.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the $1,600 in repairs for the HVAC system at the Romney Volunteer Rescue Squad building. All those in favor, please sing five a saying aye.
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 Motion passed. Okay, that does it for our main agenda items. I don't know what else the Clerk has for us there. We'll take this time to ask the public there if they have any other questions or comments concerning today's agenda. All right, hearing none, I'll ask the Clerk what else he has for us to look at.
We have a budget revision of the coal severance fund, which is similar to what we're going to do next week for the general fund. And I wanted to, and the invoices, which are slate. But I wanted to also call your attention to the need for a special meeting. Would next Tuesday morning be convenient for everybody? Because it would be a short meeting, you will have the budget revision information in your hands prior to the meeting. And the other thing I would suggest adding would be a decision on the Town of Romney's request on the pool. Or we would be able to present our recommendation on that.
I think that date is okay with me.
Gentlemen, as a heads up, and this should not be determinative, I will likely be moving around the region during that timeframe. So I think I'll have internet service, but there's a possibility that I won't. And if not, then I'll give you guys a heads up. But I'm on my way home, so hopefully I'll see you guys here before too awful long.
Good news. I would say that if we could even just manage a phone connection, we've done that before as well, specifically on this meeting. It's, last time we had one Commissioner here and two on phone, that works. So we can keep that in mind if that works.
Yeah, it looks like that'll work my calendar. Commissioner Mance, glad to hear that you're hopefully on your way home. Hopefully, safe travels as you travel around.
So I will go ahead and post special meeting for next Tuesday morning at 9:00. That said, then our budget revision number two, no, budget revision number one, I'm sorry, it's the first one of the year. This is what rebalances our funds for the new fiscal year. Coal Severance Fund is due by July 15th, and we're well ahead of that. So it's a pretty modest renovation, but, so this is official budget revision number one to the Coal Severance Fund, which is number two.
Make a motion that we approve the request for revision for the coal severance fund presented by the Clerk.
Second?
Okay, moved and seconded, that we approve the request from the Clerk's office for budget revision number two, I believe you said?
Number one.
Number one, I'm sorry, number one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. We just got our yes or no thing there, okay. We just got our yes or no thing there, okay.
Invoices rather scant in number, sorry, sit down. Invoices rather scant in number, but include our last bills for the year. Not correct, they're on this year.
Make a motion that we approve the invoices that submitted since our last meeting?
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the invoices received by the commission since our last meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I have nothing else, sir.
Okay, the clerk has nothing else. Gentlemen, anything else to, before we ask for a motion to adjourn?
I would suggest one thing, though, that you all think about the animal shelter a little bit. We, I sent you a potential job description for a director, and it was something somebody, we just pulled off the internet, but give, give some thought to that. We have extended the advertisement period for the director, so that won't be coming up for another couple of weeks, but to, to have you thinking about that a little bit, and how you want that to work, I will send you copies of our ordinances just to refresh you on what we have structured there already. And I need to find it, but Colonel G had you all approve years ago, had the commission approve some standard operating procedures, and they were helpful as well. So I wanna get those things to you, and just have that on your, in your minds to, to think about as we move forward with the animal control shelter program. So, sorry, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, clerk.
Thank you, Clerk Straight. I, I think that, just in response to that, something that I did see work well at least one other time is nomination of a hiring committee for relevant, you know, or stakeholders that would be pertaining to it. I think it would be constrained by any bylaws or documents, Clerk Straight, that you're referencing, which actually outline operation of the, of the facility. But I'm happy to review that, and then, yeah, I think we can probably nail down a potential committee by next meeting so that that's already in place by the time window closes.
That'd be good.
Yes, Commissioner Mans, I was, uh, going to suggest that as well, that we assign a committee. We, we've done that in the past with several of our openings in the county, and it allows us to, at least for that committee, you know, although it will come to the commission for consideration, it, it does allow that committee to do the, the in-depth research as needed or not needed, but anyway, yeah, I think as clerk suggested, moving on here, within the very near future, we should consider who we should put on that committee to do the interview process and, and the legwork for that, so.
I'll add that to the special agenda.
Sounds good, clerk. I don't have anything else, gentlemen, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
It's moved and seconded that the Hampshire County Commission adjourned today's meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.